Do I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Who made that motion? Bauer, okay, Councilor Bauer made that motion, I have a second.
A second mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes second. Any discussion? If not, Joe do roll call please.
Councilmember Udvig.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
All right, good, okay. Moving on to tonight's consent agenda, get a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay, Kevin?
I, I sent you an email about 10 minutes ago, I just have a question on D and F, just a quick question on both of those if I may.
Well, to do that, we'll have to pull it to do that.
Thank you.
No? Let's ask Dave, okay? Discuss it or not?
If it's just a quick question, then we would not need to, if, if the question gets answered, we can proceed with the full agenda. If it's something that is up for more lengthy discussion, then I would pull.
Is it gonna be a lengthy discussion? Kevin, or?
No, sir, there should be two, two brief questions on F and one question on D.
All right, go for it.
Okay, D was the contingency. I'm sorry. Oh. Just a second, it was. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry, sir, I have, I have my wrong pack up, I have two iPads working, I apologize. Give me just a moment.
All right, so you're taking those questions back, then I take it?
Uh, no, bear with me just one moment here.
Okay.
I'm. I'll just do it, I'm, I'm D, I was, it's a consortium for the patching and crack sealing, I was just curious, should the other cities have been in a consortium? Uh, who was, and, and working with whom, I was just curious.
Um, well, Jason's out here, I know Coon Rapids puts it on, and there's, uh, I don't know if it's quite a dozen different cities, but it's a number of different cities that pool together, I can get you a list sent over tomorrow.
Okay, and is, are they using that infrared or that special patching? In the some areas that we've talked about, I think a year ago, they were using a new um, fiber, but yet UV type exposure, and is that the same thing, Joe, is that a county situation?
I know they were doing that, like you mentioned, I don't know, I haven't heard anything about that with dispatch, but it's certainly possible that that is what they're doing, again, it's a clarification, I can get over to you.
Okay. And then the second question for item F, um, Rivers Edge Final Grade. Back in a year or so ago, we had some constituents come forward and talk about 234th and Undercliffe, which was well before, I think, anybody on this screen's time. Um, but just final grading, uh, just a question towards Kate and, and our engineer, where, that's, that's something that is going to be avoided, or I, I'm assuming it is, but I'm just, uh, they had a drainage issue, and people bought houses, et cetera, et cetera, and Kate, you and I talked about it about a year or so ago, but I was just bringing it up to make sure that we have safeguards in place that take care of this, and it won't happen again, and people will get caught off guard and.
This is not a final grade though, right, Kate, this is not a final grade, is it?
So, Mayor, Council, the, the development that's having those issues is actually on the other side of the river, that's our Rum River Terrace, where we've had quite a few that have questioned that. Um, but you're correct, we, we have put different safeguards in place, so as these new ones go forward, we're watching for that.
Okay, thank you very much, Kate, Mayor, I'm satisfied, thanks for indulging me.
All right, no problem, but once again, that's not a final grade, is it, Kate?
No, these are the preliminary gradings for, um, them to start the development as a whole.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Now, do I have a motion tonight to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Councilman Robinson makes that motion, I have a second. The second, or do you have a question now? Joe, you just did the second? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, do roll call, Joe, please.
Councilmember Bauer. Councilmember, uh, Udvig.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Okay. All right. All right, moving open to the public, is there anyone in the public's view?
Um, now would, now would be the time to, for anyone, um, I guess, attending the meeting that wants to address the council, to come forward and state your name and address, and address the council with any item that's not on the agenda.
Okay, I take it there is nobody now, okay. All right, then moving on to new business, item nine, A, Green Valley Second Edition Subdivision Concept Plan.
Mayor and Council, I will take that one. Joe, if you wouldn't mind making me the host or presenter. Whatever works. Thanks. All right. All right, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight we will be going over the concept plan for the Green Valley subdivision. So this is a proposed project that's out on the west side of the city, uh, east of Nakri Street and south of Ambassador. And the concept itself actually includes five individual parcels, which total roughly 145 acres, again, just off of Ambassador to the south there. Uh, the property today is used as farmland, woodland, and wetland. Uh, the northern 25 or so acres is used for farmland, uh, and then the southern area is that wetland and woodland area. Because of the quality wetland and woodland on site, and the applicant has provided a concept that clusters the residential lots up towards Ambassador. Um, so that's something that staff and the planning commission were supportive of, uh, because it would help to preserve the natural features that are located along that southern end of the site. Clustering it like this would also shorten the road length required for the site, uh, so decreasing the amount of infrastructure needed on the site. Future land use requests for this project would include a rezoning, and then a preliminary and final plat. So the site is guided for agricultural use in the comprehensive plan, and the proposed project is consistent with that designation. It meets both the density requirements for agricultural land, as well as the purpose of the agricultural land use category, uh, which, in addition to agriculture, is also to preserve open space areas and natural resources. The site is, uh, currently zoned A2 rural, rural estate agriculture, uh, and the request that would be associated with this project would be to rezone that area to a planned unit development based on those A2 requirements. Uh, so a majority of the flexibility with this PUD would revolve around lot area and lot width. Uh, so typically, lots in the A2 district are required to have 10 acres in area, and then 300 acres, um, excuse me, 300 feet, uh, in width. So lots in this concept are ranging between about two acres up to almost 91 acres, uh, with a majority of the lots in that two to five acre range. Um, because the lots are smaller, lot widths are also smaller, and those range from about 175 feet to 300 feet. With future submittals, uh, staff would request that the applicant specify the setbacks for the lots, uh, as well. Uh, access for the entire development, uh, would be onto Ambassador, uh, and then there would be a public street running south that would provide individual access for each lots, for each lot. Uh, Ambassador is a county road, uh, so review by the county would be required with future plans. Uh, the public street entrance, uh, that connects to Ambassador is planned for directly across the street from an existing driveway, uh, which is something that's supported by staff. And this is because it reduces the number of intersections that we would have on Ambassador. The proposed street, uh, would be classified as a temporary dead end street, uh, because it would be able to provide access to the properties to the west in the future. Temporary dead end streets must be no more than 1500 feet long, and serve no more than 16 units. And those requirements do appear to be met with this concept plan. A cul-de-sac is planned for the southern end of the street, uh, to provide turnaround space for larger or emergency vehicles. Sidewalks are required along one side of every public street in the city of St. Francis. There is a regional trail called the Sugar Hills Regional Trail, that is planned to be, uh, constructed along Ambassador in the future. Um, so the sidewalk in this proposed development would provide an off-street connection to that regional trail for the residents in the area. The natural features on the site, uh, do take up about 75% of the total area. Uh, and staff supports clustering the lots to the north, um, as you see on the concept, again, in order to preserve that woodland and wetland to the south. And the applicant has indicated that they would be planning to establish a conservation easement over the southern 80 acres of the property. And a wetland delineation would be required as part of any preliminary plat submittal. Uh, so the planning commission, uh, did review this at their meeting last month, uh, and were generally supportive of the project. Um, they were especially supportive of the idea that, uh, clustering the residential lots, uh, would preserve more natural, uh, natural space in the south part of the project. Um, so, uh, tonight, this is a concept plan, um, so council is tasked with reviewing the plan, uh, and then providing feedback, uh, to staff and the applicant for future consideration. Uh, so no formal, um, no formal action is needed tonight, simply feedback. Uh, and with that, I can answer any questions for you.
All right, thanks, Beth, you know, um, I'd like to know, just, you know, on lot number nine, if it has any acre conservation, I believe that's 90.78 acres, I see there on the, on the, uh, page. Um, so that mean, how big is lot nine gonna be?
Um, Mayor and Council, I believe lot nine is that 90 acre parcel, 90.78.
But 80 acres would be a conservation easement, correct, and that would go with that same lot?
Correct, yep, so it would be placed over that lot, um, it wouldn't split up the lot, um, the conservation easement itself just, make sure that there are no development possibilities on that site.
So my question is, if the owner of lot nine owns that lot, but he has no ability to change the 80 acres on the conservation end, correct?
That would be correct, yeah, he could still use a lot for, you know, natural, um, anything natural, walking around or, or doing things, but no development on that.
Okay, so let me ask you this then, so, so it sells to somebody, what's their PID number? Your property identification number, a PIN number, rather, what, what is that? What is that, would that, would that encompass, you know, covers all the, the total amount of 90 acres, or just where he's 90 minus 80 for his PIN?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it would, it would include the entire 90 acres.
Okay. But there would be an agreement or attachment of something that allow, and, uh, that he would acknowledge this owner, again, it's in the future, whatever, this owner would not, would know that he has, has the 8 acres, but he has no control of doing anything with the 8 acres.
That's correct, yep.
And Dave, that's legal, that's good, fine to do that?
If you put notification on there, um, yes, you put notice on there that, that can't be developed, and there are certain restrictions on it, then any future seller would, um, that would be buying that property would take it subject to the restrictions, so they would be notified of what the property can and cannot be used for.
Right, and the only reason I bring it up is because I'd hate to see somebody go in there and then try to do something there, you know, how people can do things, uh, without having, uh, uh, approval, and, uh, you know, we've seen that many times before, that's why we have codes, ordinances, and policies in place. So, another question, I mean, I, I, I know, I talked to Kate earlier about this, and she said that, that you, you went over a couple options to get this, where you got this, and this was the best fit that could be done on this, I mean, I like the, the future, I, I like the, the, the road going west there, that's, you know, uh, uh, in the future, I like that. Um, this is not a, a, a flag situation, so that's good, as far as the road itself and all that. Um, and, and it is a septic well area, so I guess, I mean, I, I guess I would have rather seen the other proposal to see how well this one came out compared to the others, because I don't know. I don't know, if, if I have questions on this one, I wonder what I have questions on the ones before this, because I, I see it like it is, but, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll bow to your expertise at HKGI, and our community development director, who seems to be okay with the P and Z on this. Um, but I, I just, it just looked kind of weird to me as it is, but, uh, compared to what I don't know, so I guess I'll just go on that. I'll, I'll turn this over to Council, Joe Mulebauer, you have any comments on this?
No, not really, I was kind of curious about the same concern, um, with the, the large lot there, as long as, I mean, some people, there might be a turn on for them to want to buy the lot, because nobody can develop around them. Um, but just as long as there's full disclosure, I don't really see an issue with it, I mean, I think, I would think obviously it'd be legal, but for me personally, it'd probably be a turn off to own 90 acres and not be able to do anything with it. But that's me, I'm a, I'm a city person, so that's what I get, but that's all.
Okay, Dave, let me ask you one question for a turnover council member. Um, uh, who pays the tax on that 80 acres then? If it's part of the PIN number of the 90.78? Does anybody know that question or answer?
Mayor and Council, it, it's gonna be a regular property with the PID, the property taxes are going to go with that property, but there's usually a benefit for them to put it in a conservation district. So it, it'll be a unique buyer that buys that property, and, and will know, you know, from that point going forward, what they can do with it. So whether it's hunting land, or, but, you know, they get a benefit for keeping it natural as well, so.
All right, and, and as you brought up hunting, uh, they would be able to use that for hunting if that, if the county allowed it?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay. All right, I guess it would be kind of a special to have a person to buy it, but having pay taxes on 90 acres, I mean, that's something else there too, okay. All right, all right, Sarah, your comments on this?
No, that was my main question too, was what, what happens with that 80 acres there, so? But there are, there are plenty of people who I'm sure would be very interested in that, if they like to hunt and such, so I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right, Kevin, your take on this?
I have no questions, Mayor, you guys have answered what I, kind of was, I was thinking about as well, so, as long as we have proper, uh, the, the, the street ends up being proper for emergency vehicles and whatnot, uh, anybody wants to buy any of these lots, welcome to St. Francis.
Okay. Rob, your comments?
I will reiterate what, uh, Kevin said, you know, it looks like a great development with, uh, 14 new homes.
Okay.
Looks great.
All right, so, uh, barring any further comments, I guess, Beth, you have our, our take on it?
I do, thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you for your work on it. All right, moving on to item nine B, uh, EDI Senior Housing Concept.
I will take this one as well, one moment. All right, uh, Mayor and Council, we are also doing another concept plan this evening, uh, this is for Visciter Prairie Senior Housing. Uh, so this is a concept plan request for the property located between Highway 47 and Ambassador Boulevard, uh, just south of Stark Road. So the project itself is 33 total acres, uh, and that includes land both east and west of Ambassador Boulevard. The project site itself, that we're gonna talk about tonight, is the roughly 18 acres that lie between Ambassador and Highway 47, uh, so that western piece there with the star on it. An administrative subdivision would be requested as part of this project, in order to split that property along Ambassador. So, uh, as the site sits today, there are residential neighborhoods to the south, uh, and then the city's industrial park is to the north. So the concept plan shows a single two-story building, uh, which would include 120 units of senior housing. Uh, so these units would include assisted living, memory care, uh, and then six care suites, uh, which are similar to hospice, uh, type services. So this concept does include above ground and underground parking, as well as opportunities for open space. So, uh, as we do with all concept plans, uh, staff evaluated this project for the different approvals that would be needed, uh, for a project like this to come to fruition. Uh, so those include that administrative subdivision, uh, that I already mentioned, a comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, and then preliminary and final plats. Uh, so we are, again, only dealing with the portion of the site that's west of Ambassador, um, and that area is actually split into two land use categories, uh, within the comprehensive plan. Uh, and those, that split follows a logical road connection, uh, between Aztec on the south side and Zia Street to the north. So the east side of the property is guided for medium density residential, um, and that's where the senior housing is proposed to be located. There is a need for a comprehensive plan amendment here, uh, to increase the density that's allowed. Um, so currently, medium density residential allows, uh, three to seven units per acre, uh, and the proposed project is coming in at roughly 8.5 units per acre. Um, so the comprehensive plan amendment would be to increase, uh, the density here, and change the land use, uh, to medium high-density residential, uh, which is that seven to 12 units per acre. The property is also currently split into multiple zoning districts. The senior housing area is planned to be zoned R2 in the upcoming zoning map update. Uh, the request would be to rezone the area to R3, which is the district where senior housing buildings are permitted. The applicant could also choose to request a planned unit development, uh, based on the R3 district, if flexibility is needed. Um, so there weren't firm calculations or numbers here to know whether or not that would be needed at this time. Um, but there may be, uh, maybe things that come up with impervious surface, as well as unit area size, uh, and then the number of efficiency units, um, that may push it over to a planned unit development, as opposed to just straight R3 zoning. I did want to take a moment and talk about the western side of this site, uh, so that's where you can see that arrow in the purple. Um, the concept plan that you can see on the, uh, top picture there, uh, that shows that site as residential. Um, and that's something that we wanted to talk about tonight, uh, because currently that area is planned. So it's, it's guided for business park light industrial use, uh, it's planned to be zoned as business park with the updated zoning map. Um, so, obviously, there, there's a disconnect there between what, uh, the city has planned for and what the applicant is showing. Uh, they are showing some sort of townhome or independent senior living, um, product. Um, so that's something that, uh, the planning commission weighed in on and, uh, was conflicted on. They liked the idea of townhomes or higher density living, uh, but they also noted that there's not a lot of land planned for business park uses in the city, uh, and that if this area were to flip residential, um, then the city may lose some opportunities for economic growth. Um, so that is something that we would like the council to comment on tonight, uh, and provide some direction. Uh, the site's current access is off of Highway 47, uh, but that's something that would be closed with any future development. Uh, so the concept is showing a primary access onto Ambassador Boulevard, with a secondary access, uh, coming up from Aztec Street. That secondary access would be used for things like deliveries, uh, and other things. So, the concept today does not show the street connection between Aztec and Zia Street, uh, which are those yellow circles on the screen. And that's something that staff would, uh, would recommend be shown, uh, with any future plans. Uh, there is a fire lane around the building, uh, as well as a turnaround in the parking lot, that would provide appropriate access for larger vehicles and emergency vehicles. As far as parking goes, the applicant is proposing 84 parking spaces, uh, with about half of these underground and half of these surface lots. Uh, the parking that's shown in the concept plan does meet the parking requirements in the code. There are a number of opportunities for pedestrian connections for this site. Um, sidewalks are required along at least one side of each public street, so that Aztec-Zia Street connection would also include a sidewalk. The concept also shows a paved trail around the entirety of the building, um, which would be used for residents, um, for recreation. Uh, the applicant should consider the opportunity to establish pedestrian connections, uh, to the off-site trail network as well, if the opportunity presents itself. On this site, uh, the impervious surface is limited to 50% of the total site. Uh, for long-term care facilities, uh, like the one that's proposed, 12% of the lot area is required to be designed outdoor recreation space. Um, so in this concept, that recreation space would include the outdoor pavilion and green space, uh, the walking loop, and then the memory care courtyard. Um, so again, we didn't have firm calculations for open space at this time, uh, those would be required with preliminary plat, uh, but it does seem as though, uh, the requirement would be met. Uh, so again, tonight, we're looking for council, uh, feedback, that we can provide the applicant, I believe the applicant is here as well. Um, so if you have any questions for me, uh, or him, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Uh, Kate, do you have any comment on this, before we go forward?
No, not at this time.
Okay, all right, well, I'll do my take on it. Uh, I actually like this layout a lot, I like this concept a lot, I like the, uh, it's a two-story building for the senior living, it's one, a single story for the town center, memory care and the care suites. Um, what I like about it is it's between Ambassador, you know, uh, Ambassador and 47, and we're trying to develop 47 as state as a commercial end of it, and then you have residential on the other side, and I think this kind of fits into residential, simply because the traffic going to this is not gonna be like a traffic going to a commercial site like Kings County Market on a daily basis, you're not gonna see that many cars there, you're gonna see visitors and stuff, but it's not gonna be, um, at a point where you have continuous flow going in and out on a commercial basis, like I said before. Um, I like the setbacks, I like the 40 spaces, uh, underground and the 44 spaces up. And I, I like, I, I like that, uh, the, the, uh, side of, on 47, that looks like it's a cul-de-sac eventually for future development of townhomes, uh, but could be used for commercial, which is nice, uh, but I'm at, I'm wondering if we shouldn't discuss that, if this goes, were to go further down the road, uh, as we have a mid dot meeting coming up, or discuss this with Min Dot that was commercial, I'm wondering if it would be good to have access, uh, in and out off of 47 for commercial, not so much for townhomes. Um, and I'm wondering, my question to you, Beth, and, and Kate, off of Aztec, uh, Aztec, right now, the, you can, you can access Aztec off of 47, right, but you're saying that that would be gone? So where would the access to Aztec be, would that be up 233rd, basically through the parking lot of the local community to get there? Or how does that work?
No, Mayor and Council, so, so this property used to be an old homestead, and that homestead had a direct access to Highway 47. Min Dot is taking that access away with a new development, so when that house went down, the access went away. So this development would then be required to use 233rd to Aztec to get to the backside or Ambassador, um, directly on the front side of the project. So, what, what they're losing is the, the current homestead access from Highway 47.
All right, and then my question to you is, if we were to go to future commercial, wouldn't it be better to have an access in and out off of 47, to feed that commercial development part? Something we should consider talking to Min Dot about, as we are discussing 47 down the road, I was asking.
Yes, Mayor and Council, so, right now, Min Dot is calling very firm that no new access would be given to Highway 47. Uh, but that's definitely a conversation that we can have with them, you know, to consider that, and then each, each development that comes forward, we've requested that, but they've, they've held firm so far, so.
Okay.
And, and just to add on, uh, Mayor and Council, this site is planned for business park use, um, so not, not the typical retail commercial necessarily, but more office space is what would, what would likely be planned for this area.
Right. Right, and on that, by the way, I, I think, like I say, I like the layout of it, I, I, again, a two-story building, it's not a high, high-rise, um, and, and again, it, it fits a need, uh, I believe, out here, uh, but I think if this, it, it's, it's a nice concept, again, between 47, the commercial side, and the residential side of Ambassador, my feeling, and my thought anyways, versus, um, having, uh, uh, more, if, if it's office buildings, that's one thing, but if it were manufacturing, that'd be another ballgame, so, uh, with deliveries and things like that. So to me, uh, I like the setbacks at 25 feet on the sides, um, I like that 60 on the front yard building setback. Um, I'd actually like the layout of it, and of course, this, um, where this will go will depend on what we see off of, on, on Bridge Street at this time, and we, that's still in play there, so we'll have to see how this plays out, but as the concept to myself, uh, I like what I see right now, I think there's good potential for it to, to make it work, uh, in that area, so, um, that's just my thoughts on it, I'm gonna turn over to council to get their comments right now, um, let's see, Kevin, your comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, no, I was able to sit in as liaison during the pit planning and zoning, and they, they brought up some good points. I, I, I like the idea too, um, it looks like it fits in that, in the parcel very nicely. Again, my only, not a concern, but just curiosity for the future, was that portion to the west, whether it could be individual townhomes and/or what was discussed was possibly retail lower, and then apartment-type living, or some type of dwelling, multi-dwelling above. Uh, again, that would be on the, the 47 side, but, uh, um, that's really the only questions I had, right now.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, uh, Sarah, yours, your comments?
Yep, my, my concern is that access to, um, but, you know, we have very little, that 40, that, uh, the county, Min Dot lets us do, so, you know, if that's, if that's the only way we get it, is by not having that access, then we find a way to work around it.
Okay. All right, thank you, Sarah, Rob, your comments?
I actually like the concept, um, you know, with that being said, the future development, um, I kind of like if, if you shove the whole building to the west, and then you could do a lot more on the Ambassador side, um, for the future development, um, aspect of it. Um, that way you're kind of not asking, uh, 47 in the, in the state to, to get access, um, you can kind of already build that access in on Ambassador's side. for any type of future development. Um, I guess we all had the same question is, you know, how do you make the best in, in a futuristic thought on that side of the development? It might be, you know, something to talk about to push the building to the west and do the future development on the ambassador side. So I have.
Uh, well, uh, let's ask the representative from this, uh, Vista. Are they, is anyone here from Vista that we can ask a question or get your comments on why you put the concept on as this, as it is?
Hi, everybody. Uh, thanks for having us. It's my name's Scott Black. I'm with the company called EDI. I have my partner, Steve Coons, and the CEO of Vista Prairie, Jim Bettnerk with us, um, tonight. I think the answer is, is absolutely. We would love to have access off of forty-seven. Uh, but in early dialogues, it was, I mean, I've had the pleasure of working with Min dot before. It's, you know, not easy discussions. So I think, you know, instead of pushing a rope, the thought was, is how could we make this site plan work? Uh, give us the needs. It's a large site for us for a hundred and twenty units. Um, but just the way the things have, have worked out over the discussions with the, the family that owns it, that this is what they need to sell us. Um, so we would love to have access off of forty-seven. I don't think that's probably feasible. So what we came up with is a concept to say ambassador's got a, a great appeal. It's got a lot of cars going down it and drive-by for us is a huge deal. Um, and then how do we make, um, the forty-seven side work knowing that we probably won't ever have access to it? And so we threw town homes on there and, and even further is a product that we call a brownstone product, but what it really is, is it's a kind of a fourth product type. Uh, so you have independent living, assisted living, memory care. Um, and this town home would be kind of a fourth product, maybe, you know, looking to people in their, you know, mid to late seventies who really aren't ready for, you know, a, a care setting. They're just looking for somewhere where, you know, people are of the same age. Uh, so that's why we threw the town homes on there. We've done it before and had success. Um, and it seemed to fit, but you can see even on that site plan, we developed it not very far. I mean, it's a pencil drawing. Um, and wanted to get your feedback. And that's kind of why we're here tonight is just to understand, you know, what your thoughts are on it. I mean, the good part of it is, is that, you know, owning it, we could kind of direct what goes there, even if it is commercial of some kind. Um, so, you know, there's good and bad with it all. I mean, it could be a great clinic location, uh, but without access to forty-seven, I think it, it hurts the value of the property, frankly, you know, for a commercial user.
Right. And, and let me ask you this. I mean, you know, if the tunnels would probably be like slabbed on gray town homes, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, we've done those as well. And the brownstone product is like you take town homes, squish them together and put a double oated corridor down them and then do underground parking. Uh, but you know, larger two-bedroom sunroom units, um, but I think town homes would fit out here well, especially if we could find a partner that would do a, you know, for sale product.
And, and, and I wanted to ask you, uh, you know, we have a meeting coming on the fifteenth with Min dot, the commissioner of Min dot for forty-seven, uh, as we're re, restructuring or redesigning forty-seven. So, uh, I don't know if we'll end up doing that, but would it be okay with you to show them this concept just in the case? Trying to push the fact that maybe, uh, I just don't want to see them, you know, not having access off forty-seven. I understand. I, I like the fact that you're, you're buffering this from forty-seven. I mean, uh, senior housing project, looking at forty-seven, I don't know how interesting that is. I mean, so tunnel's a little more little, little buffers on it, in my opinion. But I'm just saying that, that, uh, whatever an excess, I, I believe is important. It's, it's like when Quipcha came in, uh, as I was talking to Kate and Joe today, uh, as I mentioned to council before, Quipcha came in, they didn't really look at the amount of traffic that flows east and west off that, of that corridor from forty-seven going north and south. And I think that's going to be something that we'd like to see a stop sign there now. I was wish, hoping that they would have looked at that more thoroughly than just extended turn lane. And then egresses and ingresses, you know, that, that were just shuffled from, uh, two thirty-third to, uh, to, uh, Cree Street. Uh, I'm just hoping that if we show this to them, they may open their minds up to say that if this goes through and access of forty-seven would be, would be beneficial, not hurt. Cause I think it would be beneficial. I don't.
I agree a hundred percent. I agree a hundred percent. We love that access of forty-seven.
Also just to let you know, uh, as council, uh, we have had our experiences, uh, with, uh, Min dot before, you know? We're very familiar with, uh, how they work. Or how we'd like them to work, but how they work. But anyway, um, well, I, I think that, uh, that's just some of the questions I have. Cause I, I really think, you know, Aztec, I mean, you're going through a parking lot to get to that road to access that point off of forty-seven would be so much cleaner, uh, in, in the long run, especially for commercials. So, um, but.
I think we, we're trying to, to orientate ourselves so our front door was facing ambassador. And that, um, you know, service delivery, trash, that kind of thing was coming back, you know, through backup house function, um, through Aztec. So it didn't feel that way that you're, you know, driving through a parking lot to get to the front door. We would be orientated to the east.
Yeah. And I, I, I actually think, and I'm going to again, turn over to another council member here, but, but I actually think that, that actually fits better with ambassador. Cause you gotta try to fit in with the residential without being, you know, like a, a, a commercial monstrosity there and people have an eyesore in their eyes. You know what I mean? So I think that's why I thought your entry off, uh, from ambassador was probably a nicer way to go with the parking lot and the, and then the, uh, uh, well, the, uh, the trees and, you know, and all the vegetation, everything that you'll put in to make it look good. So.
Yeah.
Any other comments from you? And, uh, anyone else from your company that like to draw something before I turn over to the council?
Give me anything to add or Steve?
Okay. Then Joe, your last comments on this then?
Yeah, I love, uh, I love the concept plan. I think it's beautiful. I'd love to see it come to fruition. And Steve kind of stole a little bit of my thunder there because I was going to say the same thing as far as the buffer on forty-seven. I think, uh, having the elderly there, having that town home in between it isn't a bad idea, given you're probably not going to get access to it. Um, I think you did really well with that. Um, I don't see an issue with it. I love the placement of it. I've been wondering what's going to go there for quite some time now. And I think it's, I think everything looks great. And, uh, Stark there too. I mean, if you have stuff coming in from Stark where water treatment plant is right off of there. You know, commercially, you're saying garbage and all that stuff. You're coming off that area or whatnot. I, I think it looks great. So that's all I have.
All right. And, and, and just so I, I, I don't want to go too much into it, but, but, uh, this all depends on what this other project's going to be doing as far as how far you'll pursue it at this time. Is that right or wrong?
No, I think we're, we're, we're ready to move forward here. So, um, we want to introduce the concept to you tonight, uh, just so we could get these great, you know, feedback. Um, we are, I mean, we're going to be pushing forward. We're working through a couple of title issues that we think will be resolved in the next, you know, sixty to ninety days. Um, and then continue through the entitlement process. So we'd like to get this thing, you know, under construction within the next twelve months.
Well, that makes me feel even better as a council. I mean, we all hope for fruition on this project because it looks very nice. And I think it would be a really nice addition to the city. Um, um, and like I say, I mean, as I look through, uh, the agenda through the whole agenda, I had question marks on that one project before under a P O D is, uh, a planning development was the only way that was going to pull up. But I looked at this concept here and I called Kate on it and, uh, was very pleased with it, in my own opinion. So I think council pretty much is the same feeling. Um, so good luck to you and, uh, I hope it comes true.
Yeah, let us know how we can help with Min dot.
Okay. Anything you can give us to help will help be a beneficial and appreciate it. Um, all right. Anyways, thank you for, uh, joining our meeting tonight. And, uh, like I say, good luck to you. And I hope this comes to fruition. I really do.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Thanks, Beth, and thank you, Kate, by the way. Um, all right, moving on to item nine C, proposed zoning update zoning map, uh, one ordinance two seventy, second series, first reading.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will take this one as well. Right, there we go. Uh, all right, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight is the first reading for the adoption of the updated zoning map. So just a little bit of background quickly. Um, in March twenty twenty, uh, the city adopted the twenty forty comprehensive plan, which includes a future land use map. Uh, that's what you see on the screen. Um, and that designates the intended future use for every property in the city. So following the adoption of the comp plan, uh, the next step for the city was to update its zoning and subdivision ordinances to conform to that plan. Um, so that's something that staff started work on last summer, uh, and those ordinances are effective as of March nineteenth. So the zoning ordinance that was updated establishes new zoning districts, uses and dimensional standards that are in line with that future land use map, uh, and the comp plan itself. So the final step in that process is to then update the zoning map, uh, with the new districts that were established as part of that ordinance update. City zoning does need to conform with that future land use map in the comp plan. Um, so, uh, the updated zoning map is shown on the screen. As a reminder, the majority of the changes to the zoning map did occur for, uh, several reasons. Uh, one is that the city consolidated several districts. Um, they, we consolidated the R one and R two district into a new R one, which then kind of had a ripple effect as the old R three district is now R two and R four is now R three. District names were also updated to more accurately reflect the purpose of those districts. Um, so for example, the A three interim agriculture district, uh, was changed to urban reserve. And then finally, there were, uh, a good handful of parcels that, uh, were being used, uh, as a principal residential use, um, but were zoned agricultural. Uh, so those were rezoned to rural residential, um, again, to more accurately reflect the current use of those properties. So, uh, the zoning map was reviewed at two meetings, uh, with the planning commission. It was reviewed in February and March. Prior to the February public hearing, uh, the city sent out over six hundred letters to property owners whose property was being rezoned in hopes that, uh, we'd be able to talk with them and talk through any concerns or questions. So between, uh, the February meeting and the March meeting, staff talked with about forty property owners, um, to answer questions and concerns. Uh, and after answering their questions, uh, we had five out of the six hundred plus, um, that were in disagreement with the proposed rezoning. Um, so for each of those five, staff did take a deeper look. To make sure that what we were recommending, um, made sense. Um, so there were two changes that came out of that, which are what you see on the screen. Um, the left side, uh, is that top bullet point, um, to rezone these two parcels with that white star. This is along Rum River Boulevard. Um, they were planned originally to be zoned R two and R three. Um, but at the property owner's request, those are now, um, proposed to be zoned urban reserve. Um, so still consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, but this was something that, uh, the property owner, uh, strongly desired. Uh, the other change, uh, is more of a technical correction. Um, you can see that this property is a multifamily property today, um, and that was marked as an R one, single-family, um, district, when really it should have been R three. So staff has, has changed that and planning commission recommended approval of that change as well. Um, so those were the two changes. That came out of the planning commission discussion. So staff is recommending approval, uh, and planning commission is recommending approval of the updated zoning map. Um, this is a map that does conform to the future land use map adopted with that, uh, twenty forty comp plan. The crosshatch, I did just want to point out, um, when you zoom in, it looks less messy. Uh, but this crosshatch is meant to designate the different wild and scenic districts, uh, so that those aren't forgotten. Uh, when people are looking and trying to figure out what they can do with their properties. Uh, so if the council chooses to approve the map tonight, uh, then the map would be back for a second reading on April nineteenth, uh, and then be effective in May. So I included the suggested motion on the screen, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Well, Beth, thank you. Um, you know, I just want to say to council that this zoning plan, what I like about this, by the way, is you had public input. And, and, uh, even though we have new zoning, we have flexibility in allowing these changes on these two, on these three lots. I mean, we're changing, uh, that, uh, the gardener from R one, R three, and the other ones from R two, R three to urban. What I like about it, once again, is, you know, you have, you, we make a plan and, and like the twenty forty plan, the comp for the Met council, we did the St. Francis Ford plan. Uh, we're doing this rezoning, uh, we're, we're talking about a parks plan. A lot of these plans are good as a base, as a base foundation to work off of. That doesn't mean you can't tweak them as you need, need, as you need to, as your, uh, city, uh, goes forward. And it also doesn't mean that you can't be flexible as we are right now. So I really, uh, hats off to, uh, staff, uh, and, and H K G I for allowing that. I mean, to seeing that, uh, need to change that R one, R three, under gardener circle. Uh, once again, I don't, I don't believe plans should be rigid, rigid. Uh, I don't think, on the other hand, I don't believe you should vary from so far that you change the whole, uh, uh, idea of the plan. But the base, I just look at plans as a good base foundation, once again, and flexibility and tweaking down the road may happen. Uh, but you are able and capable of doing that. So, um, I think this is the right way to go. And I, I am for the zoning, but I like to see that those changes were, uh, something was brought to your attention and you made the changes, uh, to correct it properly. Thank you so much. Um, that's my take on it. Uh, Joe, I'll start with you on your comments on this one.
I don't really have anything to add. I think you said it all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, Sarah, your comments?
My second, Mr. Mulebar.
Okay. All right. Your comments?
I'll throw that.
Okay. See if I go for foreigners. Kevin?
I'm not gonna, I, I'm gonna let you down, Mayor. Uh, no, I want to thank Kate and Beth both working hard on this. This was a long drawn out process. There's a lot of input by this, the residents. And, um, again, I sat through the P and Z portion and our council early portion, but a lot of people stood up and, and, and brought good points and whatnot. And, and Beth again, took them one at a time. She approached them professionally and consistently. And I guess one final question for Beth, do you feel you met everyone's questions with, uh, the, as best you could? And, and again, to, uh, ensure that the current owners of these properties, their main concern was that they wouldn't, uh, incur any additional financial hardship, tax-wise or otherwise. And that as long as they own the property, they could do with what they've been doing or as they wish. New people might take a look at it and say, oh, I can't raise pigs on it now, but I could do something else. But do you feel you, you met the, you met their needs as best we could? I mean, within the boundaries you had?
Yes, Mayor and Council, you know, we, we worked individually with, with everyone that came forward, uh, and did our very best to answer any of their questions and concerns and, and walk them through the process, um, because a lot of people were coming in. You know, they, they didn't necessarily, uh, tune in as part of the comprehensive plan, but they're, they're involved now, um, after getting those letters. Uh, so it's kind of an education process, um, to explain, you know, where we've been and why we're doing what we're doing. Um, so we, we really worked hard to, to let everybody know, anybody that came forward, uh, to try to answer all their questions.
Very good. And again, thank you. And I, I know you worked really exceptionally hard that I'm sure you have burned a lot of Min dot oil on this as well. But that's all I really have. As long as, uh, the constituents are content to this point, then things change, cities change. You, you gotta be able to morph and go with the flow. And again, some of this burden is placed on us by the metropolitan council. We need, uh, we're obligated to fulfill some of our twenty-four, or fulfill, not some, fulfill, you know, what we have planned for the future. And this is just part of it. But they stood up and they did make a difference. So hopefully they can also see that when you do speak up and you bring some facts to the table, that you can, you can make a difference as a citizen. It's not just get tromping on as a little guy. So again, thank you both.
Uh, uh, and I appreciate that, Kevin, because that's right. As they bring it to our attention, we do definitely look into it thoroughly and, and give it an answer. So, but I also want to clarify something. The way the zoning works, from my understanding is their grandfather then for what they're, are doing presently on their land. Should they make any changes to that, then they have to go by the new zoning, correct? So if you have a pole barn there now, you still have a pole barn. If you had horses there before, you still have horses there. But should you change anything new, then you have to go according to the new zoning.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Just to get that on the record. So, all right, once again, very good work and, and I, and I appreciate how you, uh, uh, you know, uh, you know, work with the residents. Like Kevin said, that's important to let the Kevin, it's important for residents to know that we're not just the government that does what we want to do. In this government, we do, we work with them and, and for, on their benefit. So, um, and, and it's important that they know that. So we can go forward and do some good things for the city. So on that, uh, we'll need an ordinance roll call vote on orange, do I have a motion rather to, to, uh, for, to adopt ordinance two seven zero, second series, first reading? Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
That's where Mulebar makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Uvic makes a second, Brian, for discussion. Joe, do a roll call, please.
Council member Bauer.
Hi.
Council member Robinson.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
Council member Uvic.
Hi.
Council member Mulebar.
Hi.
All right, good. Thank you. All right, moving on to item nine D, code enforcement extension request at two three seven two five Nightingale Street.
Mayor, council, the thirty tonight is a code enforcement request from a resident. So city council or city ordinance allows staff to, to provide an extension of up to twenty days. Beyond that, it goes to council. And we've done a few of these in the past couple of years. Um, this property being one of those. With that, they had been before us before. They had what we assumed was close to about seventy cars. They got rid of those cars. Um, but, and they had the extension with the promise that they would build the pole barn and, and get that yard cleaned up and get it under control. Two years has gone by. We have been working with them with citations now, and they have requested another extension to build a pole barn. Before it even night, there's really two options that council can move forward with. We can allow that extension, you know, to allow. You know, to allow them to keep that, those code enforcement violations where they are. Um, while they build the, the building, and they're asking for a deadline of, you know, September first. Or we can continue with code enforcement and still allow them to build that building. Um, just not stop the code, if, you know, enforcement portion and require that they clean that up sooner than later. Um, with that, I'll answer any questions, but, but this one is, is before us. Um, it's really a matter of, do we want to give them, you know, a, a, a break on that code enforcement while they build that building? And that, that's what they're looking for right now. So, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we, before I go on with my comments and council comments, do we have anyone, the people that own this property here tonight?
I do not see any of them on, on the Zoom call.
Okay, because I, I want to bring something to, to council's attention here, okay? And if you look on the, on the cover page of one oh four, the packet, our green page, our agenda page, nine D. Um, they came before council on, on one, seven, nineteen, okay? And we gave them extension till eight, one, nineteen. So from eight, one, nineteen to present, that is eighteen months, okay? Actually, that's longer than that, because it's about twenty months. It's eight months plus twelve, twenty months since that time. And they've done nothing. And Kate, when I talked to Kate earlier today, she told me in the beginning, they were, they addressed the situation with the cars, got rid of them. But in time, they've had more cars coming there. I even questioned the fact that I've heard this is more like a chopping these vehicles up to selling parts. And I'm wondering why they don't even have a conditional use permit. Uh, but the person told Kate that they're not doing a business there. Uh, but you're putting parts out for cars, you gotta be selling them someplace, you're working out of your house. That to me is a conditional use permit they don't have. So I questioned that. Um, but to be honest with you, uh, I'm not for extending them. I mean, you've had from, they had from one, seven. We gave, we gave seven months there until eight, one, from eight, one, nineteen until today, again, is, is twenty months. In twenty months, I mean, a pole barn can go up in ten days, once it starts construction. So I just wonder. Uh, if we give them extension again, are we just, until nine, one, twenty-one, what they're asking for? Are we just gonna get the same story coming up after that extension? I'm, I'm willing to work with anybody, but twenty months, something should have been done in twenty months. Whether they were code compliance issues or not, the building should have been structured or, or completed in that timeframe. So. That's just my, my, my thoughts on it as of this time. So I'm gonna ask Joe Mulebar, what, what are your thoughts on this?
I guess my question's for Kate. So our, our two options are basically what? Continue to find them. While they build this or allegedly build this pole barn, or if we gave them an extension, we don't find them. Uh, while they supposedly build a, build this pole barn? Is that my understanding?
Correct. So what they're asking is, is not the requirement. To clean the property until that pole barn is built. Um, you know, basically leave the cars in place, not, not meet any city requirements. With this extension, with the idea that when the pole barn is built, it will solve all the problems. Otherwise, well, you know, they've already received the first citation. Um, if they, you know, the next step would be a second citation, or, or they clean it up and address it now. And when the pole barn is built, they can bring it back and put it in their pole barn.
So do they, is there a lot and their pole barn, they're suggesting fit the requirements or fit the uh acceptable use for that lot?
I don't know if it has gone through a full zoning requirement. We, we've talked with them for two, two and a half years now about a pole barn size on that property. Um, they had one on this property and it burnt down. So this is a rebuild. Um, so, so we are aware that they have, you know, a permit pulled, it's in zoning review. But when they dropped that off, they also dropped off, um, the extension request.
When do they pull the permit, I guess, my question?
Well, they, they dropped off the permit a couple of weeks ago, but they have not paid for and picked up to execute that permit yet. So those are really two different steps as well.
So we don't have like a build date or an end date or anything to go with it?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, not a, I'm kinda on the, the side of things when it comes to code enforcement as the mayor a little bit. Um, I like to give people lenience when we can, but I also think too that these people have apparently drug it on for this long. Um, what the case may be, what their situation may be, I guess, it's, it's unfortunate, but. I think given the time that has passed, um, and we've given them extensions before to continue to do it, I don't. I don't see the benefit in it. Um, I hate to be that guy, but at the same time, I don't, I don't. I don't know what else you can do at this point. Um, so I would, I would side with the mayor on this one.
All right, thank you, Joe. Sarah, your comments?
I have to agree. I mean, if, I mean, we, we've given them a lot of time. Yes, there's been COVID in there and such. I get that. Um, but it seems like this is kind of their hail Mary. Oh, we're gonna get in trouble again. So let's just make it look like we're gonna do this. And if we, you know, throw in our permit with this, maybe this will get this extra time. Um, if they continued, were continuing to clean it up and we saw progress happening instead of. You know, a little bit of progress, and then next thing you know, it's filled back up again, I would be more. Um, inclined to give them an extension, but when they empty it out and then they fill it back up, when they think maybe. Eyes are off them again, per se, um, I don't think that's a good idea. So, um, at this point, I would not be in favor of, of the extension.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Rob, your comments?
Well, you know, I'm, you know, very much, you know, I would love for residents to do with their land what they want. Um, this uh piece of property has had issues and they've uh, you know, been cited already. Is there anything, Kate, that we can tie to, um, the pole barn for the extension? Um, per se, is there a deadline, once you drop off a, a pole, an, an app, an application? Before it's kind of null and void?
So Mayor, Council, when someone drops off a permit, um, you know, we do the plan review for it. We give them some time, we know, we'll notify them three, four times. If they don't come back and pick it up, we'll charge them for the plan review fee. But if they don't, that's if they don't pick it up. So if they do pick up that permit, they pay for it, it expires in six months. So there, there's that deadline on top of there. Um.
I'll tell it, like, once you called me, I didn't remember.
But with that, you know, beyond that six months, if they're making progress, sometimes that can even be, um, pushed out a little bit further too. So.
Well, that's kind of where I'm leaning, you know, that we, maybe we can revisit this if they actually pull the permit and. Um, they have, you know, basically a six month window to, to build that. Um, I'm not a proponent of, you know, the city making money off of fines and things like that. We want compliance more than fine money. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at. Um, I'm on the fence. Um, more leaning towards not doing anything but continuing the uh. You know, the code enforcement part and side with the mayor. Until I can see some real promise on maybe building that pole barn. And then maybe giving them an extension, once the pole barn is, is in the process. Does that make sense?
Okay, thanks, Rob. Um, you know, I'm gonna turn over Kevin here, and I'm gonna say something at the end here, and then we'll see where we can go from there. So Kevin, give me the comments on this, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yeah, um, I'm also like Rob, you know, I, people should be able to do within reason with their property, what they'd like to do, but. This uh individual's had an extension already, and again, they, you know, made a promise and broke their promise and, you know, a handshake should be good for something and. And what really always gets me in cases like this, uh, as long as I've been with you guys and on this council and previous uh dealings. Nobody ever talks about the effects on the other people. They always talk about like this person is a victim. They've got some hardship, they've got this, they got that. It's the neighbors who have to live next to it, behind it, around it, drive by it. The property values are trying to sell. The ramifications that nobody ever talks about. So I, I think this individual is. Um, frankly, being selfish about not worrying about his neighbors. He doesn't really care, or they don't care about it. Um, not to say that person's a bad person, but come on, you came in, you made an agreement, you didn't stick to it. I also made mention to Kate of a couple of other properties, and she said they were also in, uh, they had citations in, in the. Um, on a drive-by situation, it looked like a similar situation. Um, anyways, um, I think we keep it enforced. I think that the person needs to put their money where their mouth is. Pay for the permit, get things going. I would give them, uh, since it is springtime now and the snow is gone, I'd give them thirty days. And that's, that's being very, very generous. I give them thirty days from today and they better come up and do it, or otherwise, just keep the steamroller rolling and, um. We have to do what we have to do. Again, nobody ever talks about their neighbors. They got kids, and they got properties for sale, they got things going on around them. It's oblivious to them what's going on, the person that, that has these infractions. But the people around them, they see it every day and they're sick and tired of it. So they have to reach out to us to help do this. They can't do it themselves. So, uh, that's where I'm at. I, I would give them thirty days, keep the, keep the full enforcement on. He's, they need to pay their dues. They've, uh, they've, they've, uh. They broke the promise, so that's what I got.
Well, I, I thank you, Kevin, for that, and I do agree with that, because one property that we know of, we're very familiar with, was that property on two thirty-third Ambassador. Um, and the neighbors, uh, the left and right and behind them had to deal with that, until we got that through the court system to be able to get it taken care of. Which it's been sold now, fixed up and sold, so it's a benefit to them. So I, I agree with you. I mean, people aren't taking consideration. Um, how, how, how we, how the neighbors have to deal with these properties. By the way, just once again to clarify. The medicine, uh, uh, on January seventh of two thousand nineteen, we gave an extension to August first, two thousand nineteen. And for twenty months, they've done nothing except to rid of cars and then bring more cars in. So I, I'm not against thirty days extension and, uh, on, on a caveat. That they have to have the permit, permit pulled and be under construction, and that thing has to be completed in the thirty days, or at least all two thirds done. It, we have to have a slab on the ground. I'm telling you, from my experience, pole barns do not take that long to construct, okay? It's a, it's a, it's a slab on grade with, with steel construction, it doesn't take that long. I just had a friend of mine doing out Wilmer, got it up in ten days. So we, thirty day extension, if we can, if Kate, if we can tie that, that he has to have the permit approved, paid for, put in motion, not wait six months for the permit. Otherwise, you're just gonna get to September, the weather's, you know, coming to fall and then winter, and it's gonna be another delay and delay and delay. And I think that's really, really a si- uh, situation, we don't want to put ourselves in. So I don't know how council will feel about that, and I'll go around the, on horn again with that one. But Kate, can we do something to tie it in thirty days, the permit has to be pulled, under construction and completed in a thirty day timeframe? Otherwise, no extension.
Because, so Mayor and Council, you know, we could, we could give them the thirty days and, and put that as. As part of that thirty day requirement to pull, um, you know, to pick up that extent, that permit, pay for it and get that building in process. So, and at the end of that thirty days, they just, they need to be done. They, they keep pulling these cars back and it's always cars. And it's always parting out cars and cars that don't run and cars that are sitting and waiting for, you know, their children. Um, so there's, I mean, it, the property is a mess and, and continues to cycle. So if we give them that thirty days and then we just keep going, I mean, we can do that.
Well, like I say again, that way you don't have the full, uh, period of the, uh, of, of just pulling a permit and they're waiting six months for them, maybe to do it, maybe not to do it. I still have a question about a CUP there, because I think there is definitely a business being serviced out of that, that, that area, that uh property. Especially if they're cutting up cars and selling parts and that. Uh, but that's another day, another, another, uh, 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 work session or whatever we may discuss on that. But at this particular point, um, I'll go around here real quick to counsel on that. Do you have a, anyone here have a problem? I'll start with Rob. You have a problem with that? Thirty days, pull the permit, under construction, up and running at the end of thirty days. Do you have a problem with that?
Nope, that was kind of my idea.
Okay, good. Joe, your thought on that?
No, I can deal with that compromise. I think you get the best of both worlds that way, and that way we don't have to, uh. You know, drop the hammer, so to speak, I guess. Um, give them an opportunity to, to make good on their word, even though we've already done that, but. I can agree with you.
All right, Sarah, your comments? Your take on it?
Um, yeah, I guess I can give them the thirty days. Um. We're just gonna have to really watch them, I think, because, you know, they need to get that permit paid for and. Really, we need to see something start going soon if they're gonna, you know. We notice in two or three weeks that they haven't started anything, I guess we pretty much have our answer as if they're gonna. You know, and that, at that point, there would be no extensions given again. So I guess thirty days would be the maximum that I'd give them.
All right, Kevin, your comments?
No, I, I'd be good with that, like, uh, like Joe said, you know, they decided to drop the hammer. We've been more, more than gracious. Kate's been more than patient. Um, we've done our due diligence and, and again, they haven't come through. So this is your opportunity, the clock can start tonight.
Well, I look at it like this, we all, uh, people talk that they want responsibility to go to the person and not the government. Okay, this is their responsibility. Sink or swim. Get it up or don't get it up. If you don't get it up in thirty days, you got no one to complain to but yourself. So look in the mirror and talk to yourself, because we're done listening after thirty days. So on that, um, do I need a motion on this, Dave, to go forward on this? Okay. My motion that I will be looking for on code compliance, item nine D, code enforcement extension request for two, three, seven, two, five. Nightingale Street, thirty days to pull the permit, execute construction, be complete within thirty days, or is all done? Do I have a, do I have a motion for that motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Council Robinson makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Uvic makes a second, Brian, for discussion. Joe, do a roll call, please.
Council member Mulebar.
Hi.
Council member Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
Council member Robinson.
Hi.
Council member Uvic.
Hi.
All right, thank you. Good job, staff and council. All right, moving on to items nine E, um, city state. Uh, city sale of property to the EDA. Number one, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve. Number two, ordinance two, seven, one, second series, first reading. Kate?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the authority tonight is the topic that we discussed at the work session. So, um, as we discuss the process of selling property. Uh, through the EDA versus directly from the city and how that affects the performance agreement. Um, a timeline for this action, as it's required to go through the typical sales process. Would be a, you know, tonight to do the resolution and a first reading, April nineteenth be the second reading. And all of these properties would be eligible to close, um, about May twenty-fourth. The three properties that I have included in this is the Bridge Street property and the two properties that are south of Man City. Um, as we've discussed this previously, I don't, um, have anything further here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
No, we've pretty much gone over this. It's, it's a good idea to put in the hands of the EDA. We get a little bit more uh, legal teeth in it that way. And uh, I think it's just a really good idea, so I'm very much for it. Uh, Sarah, your comments on this?
Yeah, we had good discussion about it in our work session, and I agree. It's good to let the EDA take care of it.
Okay, Kevin, your comments?
No, I'm, I'm in full agreement, as long as it gives, uh, EDA has more flexibility, like you said, Mayor, legal teeth. And the council still gets a final, uh, a sign off, but uh, that's what the EDA was created for, and let's go.
Okay, Rob, your comments?
I have no comments on it. Um, I think we're doing the best thing for, um, selling properties and. And maintaining the ability to, um, show progress. So, no questions about it.
All right, thanks, Rob. Joe, your comments?
I second what everybody else just said.
Okay, thank you. All right, then on that, I'm looking for a motion, um, for a resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twelve. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilor Bauer makes that motion. I take it Sarah will make the second. Okay, and if, if Barney, any further discussion? Any? Joe, do a roll call, please.
Um, just to clarify here, so we're gonna approve resolution twenty twenty-one, and then as a second action for the ordinance, or. So we can probably just do a, um, all in favor on the, on the, on the, on the resolution, we can just do, uh, all those in favor. Say aye.
Well, let's ask Dave, our legal expert.
You're muted.
Sorry there. We need to do a roll call, because we're in a Zoom meeting. Oh, gotcha. All right, I will go with council member Uvic.
Hi.
Council member Mulebar.
Hi.
Council member Bauer.
Hi.
Council member Robinson.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Okay, moving on to, uh, uh, item two of item E. Uh, ordinance two, seven, one, second series, first reading. Do I have a motion to adopt that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Uvic makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Kevin got it.
Right. Councilor Robinson makes that second. Uh, Barney, any further discussion? Joe, do a roll call, please.
Council member Robinson.
Hi.
Council member Mulebar.
Hi.
Council member Uvic.
Hi.
Council member Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi.
Okay, good job, Kate. And Beth and I was, I mean, on that, and, uh, looking forward to seeing that. looking forward to seeing that all come together. I think EDA is really, really a full motion right now and doing a good job for the city. So it's really nice to see it. Especially as our, our city's growing and the things that we've got planned to go forward with. Uh, moving on to item nine F, schedule a work session.
Honorable Mayor and Council, just looking to schedule a work session for maybe sometime next week to discuss the, uh, bottle shop full-time employee as well as, uh, the park planning discussion.
All right, and Joe, will we be discussing, uh, the bids for that? Because the bids are on eighth this week. Will we be discussing the biz at that work session too or not?
You know, the, the bids will go right to the council meeting on, I think it's the nineteenth this month. Um, those just be put on there automatically for approval or accepting or rejecting them. Um, I'm certainly sure we would be informally mentioning some numbers that come up when we talk about the full-time employee as well, though.
Well, I think that would be a good idea, at least to bring to attention the council at a work session before we go down. So, okay. So you're looking at, everybody can pull out their calendars right now. You're looking for April twelfth?
Uh, that, that week. I know we, I don't do them on school board meeting nights anymore. So maybe the thirteenth or fourteenth.
All right, how does the thirteenth look for everybody at five thirty on Zoom? Rob, yes?
I would prefer that because the mind out is on the fifteenth. So I'd rather, um, have it later night on Tuesday versus Wednesday.
Good idea. Okay. Well, thirteenth, right. So we have a break in between. Okay. So Rob, yes. Sarah, yes? Kevin, yes. Joe, yes. Okay. So you have it for, uh, Tuesday, um, the thirteenth, five thirty PM on Zoom, okay? That good?
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna put that in my phone here while I've got this on. Go, so just give me a second here. Oh, thirteenth. Okay, it's down. There we go. Isn't it nice how we do work sessions compared to last administration? I definitely like it. All right, moving on. Um, I think right now, um, we're into a second meeting open to the public if we have anyone. Do we?
So now would be the time for anyone who's attending the meeting to address the city council on any items, um, especially not on the agenda. Does not appear we have anyone ready to address the council.
I would appreciate, I'm sorry that I was not able to join you in time for nine C and I'm just asking what happened?
Nine C, uh, proposed zoning update. We approved it, uh, for the first reading and the zoning map. We did.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, let's see. No one else from meeting open to the public. So we'll move on to reports. And we have no department reports on this meeting scheduled. So we're into council member reports. And I will start with, uh, Joe Millbar.
Not a lot to report, Mr. Mayor. I did get a stomach bug, so be careful out there. Um, it was an ugly twenty-four hours roughly. Um, freezing, vomiting and, uh, amongst other things. Um, so just try to stay healthy. But it's over with now. So that's good.
All right, I'm glad. I get my second shot tomorrow, by the way. So we'll see how that works. Anyways, Sarah, your comments?
Um, I, I attended the community ed, um, meeting, uh, sharing some good information and trying to, um, kind of tweak our community ed classes with, with COVID. Now that we can offer them pretty openly again, um, just seeing, um, what needs are, are out there. Um, I'm also working with the, um, the health for, mental health forum. We will be having a, uh, a Zoom um, forum again, um, on May fourth. We're still deciding exactly what time we're gonna start. We're going to be, um, allowing five hundred people, um, to, um, view the movie angst. And so it's gonna kind of be in a, on a first come, first served basis. So you'll have to make a reservation to watch that, but, um, you know, we had a hundred and forty people say that they would attend the last, um, forum and we had thirty to thirty-five people show up. So we figured five hundred was an okay number of, of people to, to give that opportunity to. Um, you know, you can have as many people at your house, you know, watching it as you want. There are no limits as to how many people can watch it on your device at one time. Um, I was able to watch it and it's a very good movie. Um, and then, um, just kind of one, um, point of order, um, in our work sessions or in our meetings, I guess, when, when we come to a consensus or an agreement about how we're gonna handle the situation, particularly the, the, uh, SRO and, um, perhaps I, I don't believe I misunderstood, but council's direction was that I was going to reach out to the PTA organization, which I did. Um, she did get back to me today and she said that, um, she is getting that information, um, distributed to a few more of the parents. There is some interest on that. So I would kindly request that council does not go on and make any further comments on that. Let, let this go. Um, I did get an email from Beth, um, Geese, uh, earlier tonight and, um, you know, she was just reminding me that, you know, we are one of the only districts that, we, we pay for the, they, the district, according to her, the district pays for the SRO year round, but only gets their use during school year. And they have some issues with the language of if the SRO needs have a vacation. And I said to her via email, I said, why didn't you come to me? Why didn't you come to Todd? Why didn't you talk to us about, you know, if there are changes that you want to see made in contract, if we don't know there's any changes that you want made, we can't help you. Um, so, um, a couple of the other school board members, um, did say that, you know, you know, you know that I support SROs, but we really just need these for mental health. Um, people and we're getting them on the grant. And I'm like, yes, you're getting on a grant, but you were using grant money to pay for that SRO too. So I don't think the conversation is completely dead yet. Like, do you see some opening? Um, like I said, you know, when part of my job is to go to the school board and, you know, tell them when the city has concerns about something that they are doing. You know, I did tell them, I'm very concerned that you did this so under the radar again. And it feels like you're trying to hide things because you knew what, what happened the last time you tried to cut the SRO. You were told you didn't want to. So again, I just asked that we don't push the subject on social media. Let's give it till the end of the week for this PTA group to hopefully come through and, um, come up with a way that they want to present to the parents. That will probably be better than what we're gonna come up with because their parents in that they, they know how to relate that to the other parents that they're, you know, involved with. So, um, I do believe that we're gonna get some traction. I do believe that the district has not completely slammed the door on us. Um, and so we'll continue working on it. Um, I did mention that, you know, we may need to think about lengthening the contract because it shouldn't be something that's on the chopping block every year. Um, for stability sake, for our staff, for our students. Um, so they are still open. It's not a completely closed thing. So let's please just respect the process and, um, hopefully this plays out a little better, um, than, than we, than it is right now. I mean, I'm not one to give up. I'm a fighter. And so I will continue to fight this until Beth tells me not to call her or show up at their door anymore.
All right, thank you, sir. And I just want to comment here that, that, um, you know, I think the way to do it is to get the parents, we've discussed this before about the, the parents need, if, if, the, the bottom line is, are the parents aware that the SRO was being discontinued? If they aren't, if they are, they are in agreement with the, with the school district, then there's nothing more for us to do. But on the other hand, if they're not aware of it, then it's something we should bring to their attention for them to be able to say to the, the school district what their desire is for an SRO. It's not, as a council, we have no authority there as individuals, we do as taxpayers, but as a council, we don't. So the key to it, I believe anyways, is to use, to see if the parents are being notified properly of a change like this that, 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 that has to do with safety of their children in the school day, uh, through a school year. So I think, I think I, I'd rather see it like done like this in my own opinion. So that they don't think that we're going around a roundabout way to get to them. I mean, it's, again, it's not, the council doesn't have the authority. It's up to the parents. Our, our objective here is just to make the parents aware of it. And then to say, and if they tell us that they're aware of it and they, they go on with it, then fine, that's fine with us. Uh, but if not, uh, it's time for them to be informed so they can make a, an eligible decision on their own. I think that's, that's what that's about. So thank you, Sarah.
Welcome.
By the way, I just, uh, one thing here, we're talking about school district. Darcy, is there any way, do you know the school, the budget for the school year? Twenty-one, twenty-two for them? Do you know what that is at all? Or how I would find that out?
No, I don't. Yeah, you, you'd have to have to probably put in a request to the school district.
Okay. The, the reason I bring that up is in, for Todd's, for Todd too, by the way. You know, Sarah says that she had heard something about thirty million dollar budget. Is that what you had heard something to that effect? Is that about right or something on your number? Is that what I heard or am I wrong? I don't, I don't know if it's that much, but just, just to show you, I'm just gonna give you a comparison. Okay? On thirty million dollars, if you take it in times of by two point two five percent, that's seventy-five thousand dollars. That's just above an SRO's pay, okay? On thirty million. So I'm really questioning how much of that percentage of their budget is about the SRO. They, they claimed in their budget cuts, they were gonna get rid of the SRO and that, but we, but hire a consultant for thirty-five thousand dollars. So they're only really saving about a little, uh, over half of the SRO. So my question is what I'd really like to do, and Todd can do it or whatever, or Sarah can reach out. Can we find what the budget is for the school district? And then let's, then let's do some mathematics. You know, hey, I did, I, I did well with that in school and I can do that well now. But I'd like to sit there and find out what the percentage of their budget is that's designated for the SRO. Because if it's a small, small point something percentage, I think the parents need to know that too, by the way. This is not something I don't believe it's ten percent of their budget. I don't believe anywhere it's twenty percent of their budget. I believe it's a small, small minimal amount of their budget. And I think again, the parents need to know that so they can look at it on the bigger picture, in my opinion. I think that's.
I can get that information.
All right, and then give it to me and I'll take it from you.
Yep.
Kevin, your comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no, Sarah answered a lot of the questions that I was gonna bring up. And I really do sincerely hope that um, the police chief gets an opportunity to, at least a twenty-minute window of someone's time that, that has a care for the facts and the information and the charting and the graphs that he put together, let alone the testimony of the actual people involved who uh, impact these kids on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. So I, I'm really hopeful and, um, I hope Sarah's got the right people's ear that they're gonna step up and do something, do the right thing anyway. Um, I attended a finance meeting last week with, uh, Jason in Public Works Department. He did a really good job. Uh, he laid a lot of stuff out. He's moved some puzzle pieces around. Did some housekeeping, uh, on some stuff that was, uh, kind of languishing there and he uh, was surprised to see some of that, but he moved, moved pieces around. He, uh, he did a good job for his first time out in one year in his chair. So a kudos to him. Uh, I also, uh, spent my birthday evening and went to the Oak Grove City Council meeting and sat in on another fine chapter of As Poppy Street Turns. And it didn't turn out well at all. Uh, it wasn't awful, but, um, there, uh, long story short is it's still open for discussion. There's one council member who let me down. Uh, and, uh, not let me personally down, just my, my thoughts of their impact on the council. Another council member stood up and didn't have a face and, and he realized that, you know, things cost more than just fifty cents nowadays. So, um, it's open again. Chuck, uh, their engineer is gonna look at the dollars and cents. Uh, I did get up. I just couldn't take it any longer. I hadn't stand up and asked to be recognized. I didn't say who I was. I just said where I lived and my address. And, uh, but they knew who I was. And I said, hey, you know, we're cities, we're borders. The border is never gonna change, pal. So, um, they're also entering in the same kind of, I think, similar situation with East Bethel because they share university avenue in several spots. So it'll be interesting, uh, what kind of kid gloves or gloves they don't wear during that conversation, but it's still ongoing. The mayor knows him and I have spoke about it, uh, before and, and Joe Coleman's been heavily involved as well. So we'll see what turns out. I said, you know what, fellas, whatever you decide, you decide. Just let us know. You know, this is getting to be old news. So um, other than that, um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, all right, Rob, your comments?
Um, I just want to make a comment on something that Sarah said, that, that the superintendent said that if, you know, they're paying for this SRO and, and what if they take a vacation day? Um, and I know that if a call goes down and SRO happens to be on a vacation day throughout the school year, I know that we have an outstanding police department. And with Todd as the chief, someone's going to respond there. Um, I find it offensive that they say they're paying for something, um, that somebody may get a vacation day throughout the year. Um, then keep all of your teachers there the entire year. Uh, and don't let them go on vacation because obviously the school district's gonna fall apart if someone takes a vacation day. Um, so that's my little high horse about, um, people taking vacation days, um, when they have a work year. Um, I did have a conversation this week, um, sat down with, uh, Commissioner Look, um, and talked over a bunch of things, um, that we want to do here in the city, ideas, thoughts. Um, I did kick the, um, new fire station city hall, um, with a library dorm inside of that facility idea to him. Um, he thought it was a great idea. Um, what the dollars and cents look like, who knows? Um, I brought up the, the bike path, uh, underneath of Bridge Street to connect, uh, underneath, uh, the Rome River there. Um, he's still, still on the plans, um, looking for funding. It's, uh, funded a couple of years out yet. But he's looking to have that pushed up, um, hopefully in the next year. Um, and then just all the, the forty-seven corridor that, you know, the council's on board. Um, for the meeting and look forward to having his presence there, um, for that. So that's what, um, he and I sat down and, and conversated about it. It was a good conversation. Um, and I'm just hoping it's not, uh, politics as usual, um, because my politic level doesn't go up that high. Um, so I'm looking to get some things and ideas done, um, that'll make St. Francis better. So that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you. Good job. I'm glad you, I'm glad. And, and, and how was Matt's take? Is he positive? You know, upbeat on this stuff that we talked about?
He, he spoke of maybe having a, a plan drawn up of how the city sees it. Um, he didn't, you know, what's the cost of that? If that's something that, you know, our engineering firm can do. Um, he had mentioned, uh, Bolton and Mink had did, uh, Highway ten corridor remodel. And of course, it's a state highway, um, for Ramsey. And pretty much Ramsey said, hey, this is what it looks like. This is what we want. And kind of nudged Mindot along in that aspect. I don't know if that's a good, that's something we can talk about. Um, but I don't know if, um, our firm is, is big enough to, to get that conceptual drawings done and, and meet with um, Mindot about that. We'll have to see how this next meeting goes and see, um, kind of the path we want to take on that. So.
Well, I tell you what, let's ask Joe Coleman right here, right now. That's not a bad idea. Is there something that we, can we, can we draw a concept plan of what we'd like to see on forty-seven to bring it to their attention? I mean, maybe a, a picture does speak ten thousand words. So can that, is that possible? Is that a good thing to do or not?
You know, we certainly can. We, we, when we started this process, we did actually give them a concept plan that showed an urban parkway shifted over to the east where the right of way would go back to the city. Um, I don't know that that design is in or up for debate because that's ultimately what Mindot designed too, but they just put four roundabouts in the middle of it where we would have put four stoplights in the middle of it. So I don't, and they use the whole right of way. So I don't know. We can certainly engage in a design. I don't know if we'd ever get one done by the time the next meeting rolls around on the fifteenth here. Uh, but I thi, I view this next meeting as staying alive. We want to keep the conversation going, not pull the plug on the deal. Um, we can always buy ourselves more time and, and, uh, regroup after the fifteenth. Um, so I think the goal of the fifteenth is to just keep the conversation going and, um, we can certainly engage in a firm. I think the big question is what do you put on the intersections? Um, I don't know if the layout is, is that much up for discussion as much as it's what do you put in the middle of it?
So you don't think that showing them our concept of? So you don't think that showing them our concept of forty seven versus what their concept is would be beneficial to us at this meeting?
Well, I I am going to do that. I'm going to reiterate that we had this drawn up at the beginning. We had the right away going back to the city or the the property owners and that was disregarded. I mean, we're going to go over that. But having a full blown concept with intersection controls, I think, is highly unlikely.
Well, the reason I say that is because we don't know how much the commissioner and deputy commissioner has actually seen of what Melissa Barnes of Beth actually did. We don't know if it got up the up the chain of command. We don't know that. So we could be talking to an audience that has no no awareness of what we actually talked about over a year's worth.
Right. And kind of the main points that we're going to bring up with them is, one, we showed them this plan that we had drawn up before meeting one. We dropped this on their lap, said we wanted right away, said we wanted an urban parkway, et cetera. And then we're going to show them that they didn't use any of that right away, going back to property owners. And they used the full three hundred feet of it. And they were going to make us pay for it and they were going to put roundabouts in it. I think that's kind of the context of basically what happened. And I mean, if you wanted to sum it up, that's where we're at today. I think the big question is, what do you put at the intersections?
Well, okay, I understand that. But these companies that we deal with have CAD programs. So, you know, I mean, if they have the initial plan that you talked about in there, they can, they can, you know, they can put in stoplights, whatever, not that hard to do. But I'm just saying to you, I just wonder, I wonder how much of the information that Melissa Barnes and Beth collected over a year's worth of post-its on maps actually got up the chain to the commissioner we're going to be talking to on the fifteenth. And so it's the same thing with ISD fifteen. How much of the residents, how much of the of the parents know that the school is trying to take away or discontinue the SRO? We don't know the answer to that question until Sarah does her work with those parents. And the same thing with the DNR, I mean, M. MinDOT, rather, we don't know what they know. We could be going into a meeting, these people might not have any awareness of anything we've done for over a year. I don't know how their their system works in their staff meetings or whatever versus ours.
Yeah, we'll we'll certainly have infographics for them showing, you know, what we are looking for versus what they came back with. And, you know, they can say that the residents said this and that, but the city told them what we wanted. And we were very clear from the onset of this. And they've wasted tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars by circumventing almost everything we said and bringing us to where we're at today.
I mean, I'm not putting, I'm not trying to put Melissa Barnes and Beth's head in the chopping block. Not intentionally anyways. Okay, I'll put it like that. But I will say to you, I really doubt how much of it got up the ladder to the people that can make the final decisions on what projects come through and what don't. And I just, because I think the way they left was it's either our way or it's no way. And we'll take the stoplight with us. That's ridiculous. That's not working with anybody. So I'm really hoping that this meeting, it will be open minded and flexible, at least give us an open ear and not just give us a, you know, a lip service, I hope. We'll see. Anyways, you might want to check on that with either HKGI or or our engineering company, see what they can put together. Visuals do help, you know what I mean?
So we'll see. We have some queued up, ready to go, Mr. Mayor.
No, because like I say, again, we have sixty minutes to make our case. That's what we have. All right, listen, I want to thank everybody here. I want, I got some questions here. Dave, Dave Schmidt, the leak that you were telling me about, and how was the building this year through winter? Dave, you're muted. You're muted.
Doesn't look like it's muted, but his audio is not picking up here.
So Dave, you can give me a call on that. At your leisure. We can discuss it. Okay, not a problem. Okay. Also, I want to go to Poppy Street. You know, once again, we're at a situation where you have to wait now to the twenty ninth of April for one more time for their engineer to look over the numbers. He's already looked over before and clarify the numbers that he's already clarified before, but that's what we have to do. So what I've done here, just to make council aware here, I I made a call to the Minnesota Municipal State Aid Program of the state of Minnesota. And I reached out to Dan Erickson, their engineer for that department. And what I did was Craig knows him very well, by the way. And I asked him, I asked him last Friday if there was any time that he's ever negotiated or or mediated in a situation similar to what we're having. And he said that he had. He said he has no teeth, no legal course of action he could take as far as the MSA and being an engineer. But I'm I'm thinking, and I'm not, I would not do this without, of course, council's approval and and going to wait and of course, waiting till after April twenty ninth to see what they do. But I'm hoping that maybe my thought is a different messenger, not Kevin, not myself, not Joe, not Craig, whatever. Doesn't seem like they're listening to us at all. Maybe a third party engineer that handles this, the MSA, the Minnesota State Municipal State Aid Program for for the state. Maybe he can bring to them some clarity on what we're trying to do there. I ran over the concept of what we're doing on on Poppy Street with a full reconstruct, some utility changes, who's paying for what. He liked the idea, thought it was good. He liked our road program, thought that was excellent. He also agreed with me that most cities don't deal with roads. The problem continues on and on and on with those cities and they don't budget for it. And we are budgeting for ours. So I'm hoping that he'll be an ace to hold out until April twenty ninth. Hopefully, he won't have to use that ace. But I just wanted to make you counsel aware that I reached out to somebody. It was the only thing I could think of because again, David's told us, you know, Dave Shapps has told us that there's really no legal recourse at this time we can do. But I'm just hoping a different messenger, bringing the message in a different light with more clarity from the state may convince them that what we're doing here is the right thing to do. Once again, I told them how the project was, what we were trying to do, told them that we had some utility changes that we were doing, come out of our pocket. Told them the sidewalk is going to be papered out of our side, but that we wanted their their side to match our full reconstruct so that it doesn't lessen the lifespan of our project. He agreed with everything and said that he would help us in any way that he could. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that he has had familiarity with this and hoped that he also hoped that he could help us out. So I just want to bring it up to your attention. Okay? And I also want to say to staff, I mean, council rather, on Wednesday, Kevin and myself will be part of the final process for choosing the the city clerk for our city. That process will be a three hour process on from one o'clock to four o'clock on Wednesday, the seventh. And we'll see how the outcome of that turns out. But also I want to say Jenny, we'll we'll work with you on the on the minutes and that. Don't worry about it. You're not being graded. So just do the best you can with it. Okay?
Thanks, Steve.
Don't worry about it. There is no grade here. Anyway, because there was a grade, I probably flunked it myself anyway. So all right, moving on here, Jackie from Ambassador Program wanted me to thank the council for for that four hundred dollars for that storage this year. They weren't able to raise it because of the pandemic. But she thanked me very much. And once again, I wanted to say to the council, that's the first time in four years she's ever reached out for me on anything, period. Never called me ever before. I've offered her, if she ever had any difficulty to call me, and I would bring it to the potential of the council. She never had until then. So I take it as something that was very important to them and I'm glad that we could do it for them. And she thanked us very much. So just want to pass that on to council. On that, I want to say in general here, and I probably have said this before, I've said it to Kate, I've said it to Joe, I know, in private conversations and probably Sarah too and all that. But I just want to go on the record and say that I I believe we have the right people in the right place at the right time with the knowledge to pull off or to take advantage of this growth spurt we're going through right now. I believe everything is, I've never, in my whole seventy one years of life, have ever had it where where all the pieces of the puzzle fit together to make the most out of where we are right now. And so to me, with staff, department heads and staff itself and council working in conjunction with it. And I am hoping for the the trust of the city, city residents that we're, we've worked on for the last couple of years, coming to fruition, all that. But I really believe we are in the right place, the right time, with the right knowledge and the people that we have working for us to make it make the hey, the sunshine with the second spurt of growth. We didn't have that in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety, two thousand and ten, when we grew by over twenty six hundred people because our city administrator didn't start till two thousand and fifteen, our community development director didn't start till two thousand and fifteen, our finance director didn't start till two thousand and ten. So now all the pieces are in place and we have a constructive council that does its due diligence, that is transparent, that reaches out to people. And I believe right now we are in the best place we could be. The only hope I have is the economy drags on a little bit in the in the direction it is for a little lot. Well, for at least a couple more years, we'll be great. So we got our shovels in the ground. But I'm just saying to you, I want to commend staff, department head staff itself and the council for doing the job you're doing that has allowed us to get where we are after four years of hard, hard work. And I think right now we're in a position that within the next six months, two year, we're going to start seeing that hard work pay off in that first domino fall and create the city that we all residents desire and want, as well as our council wants and desire along with our staff. So kudos to everybody on this. Keep up the good work. Above all, keep safe. Have my second shot tomorrow, like I said. So I hope everybody gets their vaccinations when they can and hopefully we get past this pandemic and we can have some in person meetings again and be back to a normal life. In the meantime, I want to thank everybody for their job. Joe, is there any more business we have to do at this time?
No further business, Your Honor.
I just want to say one thing. I do see someone here on our screen here, Kerry Buchanan, I believe it is. I don't know if he's listening to us. Is he there? Is he have a comment for us or anything like that at this time? Or was he just an observing, a person just observing our meeting?
I was actually part of the Green Valley Development thing. I didn't, I thought it was coming up later in the meeting, but I don't know if you guys did that before I was able to log on because I bet I was some problems.
Yeah, we did do that. And we just, was this the concept and some comments from from council? So we did do that earlier.
They got a list of the questions that I'll get tomorrow? Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, well, thank you. Like I say, and I want to just mention, as you mentioned that, the the only way that can be pulled off and Kate can tell me this right on, it really has to be under a planned unit development to pull that off, correct? Kate, that PUD on that one, on that?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Also, just while I have you here, I wanted to point out something that was in consent agenda. And just because it just shows you how a bidding goes on with things. If you look here in your packet at the very beginning, and I just go to pages here. But for the environmental, for the work on the housing, for the for Lucky Mike and that, that's going to be taken out here. I want to get it to it myself here, by the way. I just thought this was kind of very interesting between between the two companies that Kate had bids from on the, let me just get that up here. Where is that? I don't want to hold anybody up here, but I just found this very interesting here. If you look at page twenty eight in EnviroBait, two bids here, just to show you how different bids can be. The two projects, three, seven, seven, two Bridge Street. And again, Jenny, that's on page twenty eight of our package. So you'll see it there. And then two, two, nine, five, one Ambassador, they're charging us a total of ninety four hundred, forty dollars. They're they're supplying power and water and they're going to be taking the vermiculite, vermiculite out, which I've dealt with in construction myself. So I I know how that is for the total cost of ninety four, forty. And I just want to bring your attention how this bids out here. The second company EPS was going to charge us fifty eight hundred, sixty dollars just to do carpet, mastic and linoleum and mastic. And again, Jenny, that's on page twenty nine of the packet. And then they were going to give us a time not to exceed ten thousand on on the vermiculite on a one story building with no attic. I mean, I I'm trying to understand because it says in here, the man says on item four here, I propose to do the removal of the vermiculite insulation on a timely material basis. The reason is, is because I'm not sure of the stability and safety of entering and working inside the attic. I also do not know the volume of vermiculite insulation that is in the attic. I will only charge for what takes to do this removal. And he has that up to ten thousand. So the whole bid would could cost us fifteen thousand or sixty dollars. But my question to him is, and he says here on the following general notes, owner to provide access to utility hookups, including water and electricity. Kate has told me those utilities have been shut down. Okay? And and so therefore, the other company is going to supply the water and electric that they need to to do their job. And yet this company is talking about an attic that doesn't exist on a one story building. Yes, they have a ceiling and I'm sure that the vermiculite is on it, but they won't be walking in it unless they're little midgets to do that. So my point is, I hats off to Kate and she's had familiarity with the with the first company, which I'm glad, by the way. But it just shows you how two bids are completely opposite of each other. And that's why our staff's done a good job looking at these bids. But I just marvel at he's going. We have to supply water and electric because he can't, yet the other company can. And the other company isn't worried about going up in an attic that doesn't exist, but this gentleman is. So I just want to bring that to your attention. That's why it's always nice to get two bids and and check it out like we did on the flooring to the fire station. We got three bids and we came out with a really good company that did a really good job. So I just want to bring that to your attention. I I always like, I I want to point out when staff does what they do good and they do good looking over these bids. So it's important for us to know that. As that information comes to us, it has been vetted properly. We ask our questions, but it has been vetted. So I just want to bring that again to your attention. Once again, I I want to say, I'm very pleased with the direction of the city and I hope it continues. And it's all been hard work for, again, the last four years as we got in. But I'm looking at some light at the end of the tunnel, finally seeing that there's possibility that some of this hard work may actually pay off. And that's to all of us doing a work as a team. And I really do appreciate that every day. I may not say it enough, but I try to say it whenever I can. So thank you, thank you, thank you. On that, if there's no future business, I'm going to join this meeting at seven forty five on Monday, the fifth. Thank you. Be safe. Bye bye.